We could maybe ask the maestro to sing, but not the finance director. Good morning. It is 9:00 AM. I would like to call the November 18th, 2015, or 5786. Is that what year? Who told me it was?
Don't quote.
Okay, okay. Council meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present and Dave Drury is our acting city manager today while Howard is out of the country.
Thank you.
So please stand for the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Our heavenly Father, we come before you this morning, weeks before the date celebrated throughout the country as Thanksgiving Day, with special thoughts as we invoke thy love and guidance and blessings on our city council and work we perform here. We thank you for the guidance you have given our council in including our modest efforts in these meetings, and pray that we both, council and the public, continue to strive to follow your commandments in the years to come as we have in the past. Finally, we give our thanks, not only today and the special day set aside next week, for all the blessings of this life, also to assist us with thy grace that we may continue in fellowship with you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have several exciting proclamations, the first of which is Small Business Saturday. Council member Kavanaugh.
My pleasure. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, whereas the City of Punta Gorda celebrates local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. Whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there is currently 27.9 million small businesses in the United States, which represents 99.7 percent of American employer firms, creates more than two-thirds of new jobs and generates 54 percent of all US sales. And whereas small businesses employ over 55 percent of the working population in the United States, and whereas 89 percent of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue. And whereas the City of Punta Gorda supports local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserves our neighborhoods. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving Day as a Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim November 28th, 2015, as Small Business Saturday, and urges all residents, both locally and nationwide, to support small businesses and merchants on this day and throughout the year. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this 18th day of November, 2015, Rachel Kiesling, Mayor. And accepting the award will be John Wright of the Punta Gorda Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you. Just on behalf of all the small businesses, we know that our community thrives on all of these businesses, and it's not just one day, it's year-round. They are here, they are part of our community, they are educating their children here, they are spending their dollars here, so whenever you have choices this season, make it local, and let's keep it here. Blatant marketing 101, the Clydesdales will be in town this afternoon. They leave City Marketplace at 1:00, and they will march from there to Lashley Crabhouse, they will go to Celtic Gray, all the way down Marion Avenue, making the turn here at Harvey in front of City Hall, going to Hurricane Charlie's, and then from there will cross over to 41 North and end up on the lawn at the tiki bar. So any time between 1:00 and 3:00, depending on where you are on that route, okay? They will have to get back into their custom air-conditioned luxury dwellings by 3:00 o'clock, so we'll see you there. And we see you tomorrow at the tree lighting for the city and the downtown merchants, starting at 5:00. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing them here, John.
Okay, next, we have council member Ryan with his first proclamation, and it happens to be the Christmas Parade Day.
Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, whereas the Charlotte County Chamber of Commerce is devoted to enriching the business, civic, and cultural aspects of Charlotte County, and whereas the Christmas season has been traditionally celebrated with a chamber-sponsored Christmas parade for citizens and visitors to the community, and whereas 34th Annual Christmas Parade will commence at 12:00 noon on the afternoon of December 5, 2015, and whereas the parents of little ones should take note, the one and only Mr. S. Claus will travel thousands of miles to attend the historic event in the beautiful city of Punta Gorda, and whereas the parade theme of the 12 Days of Christmas brings about pleasant memories of hearth and home from many locales, now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim Saturday, December 5, 2015, as Christmas Parade Day, and urges all citizens to share in the fun at the Christmas Parade. Passed and fully adopted in regular session this 18th day of November, 2015, Rachel Kiesling, Mayor.
And accepting would be Ron Thomas, who is the parade guru.
And the best ice cream.
And the ice cream guru.
Good morning. Ron Thomas, Harbor Walk Scoops and Bites. This is our 37th Christmas Parade coming up. And first, a couple of quick announcements. General Carr and Captain Atkins have agreed to be the grand marshals this year. Very super cool.
Nice, very nice.
Very nice, that's nice. This is our 37th year, this is my 26-year volunteering for the Christmas Parade. I started at the top, collecting trash, and then I moved down, collecting horse poop, and now I'm the chairman, so. Yay, good job Julie. Thank you so much. A couple of just quick things, and then I'll get out of here, because I gotta go to work. John was saying something about small business. We hire seven young people, one of them is the son of our wonderful fire chief right there, and also we had his daughter working for us as well. We hire a lot of Charlotte High kids, and we're very excited to be part of this small business community. It's very important to us. Finally, thanks to the city in general, but particularly the fire department, the police department, and right-of-way department for all the work that they do for the Christmas Parade. It's a big task. When you're watching it, it seems sort of easy and organized, but it's really not without the city's participation. So thank you for being our partner. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have National American Indian Heritage Month, and Vice Mayor Devine will present.
My pleasure. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month, and whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim November, 2015, as National American Indian Heritage Month, and urges citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Passed and duly adopted this 18th day of November, 2015, City of Punta Gorda, Rachel Kiesling, Mayor. And accepting is Diane Dokowitz.
You're welcome to say a few words at the podium.
Thank you. Hello. Good to see you. I'm Diana Dokowitz. I'm the regent of the Charlotte Bay Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. And for those that don't know, the National Society supports two Indian schools. We also give scholarships to college to Indian children. So please, we've already had one girl receive a scholarship from National two years ago. We advertise in the paper. We're always looking for Native American Indian children. So just remember, Charlotte Bay Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, and we'll pass it on to National and get the child taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's my honor to present the next proclamation, Shop Charlotte Month, whereas the Board of Directors of the Charlotte County Chamber of Commerce recognizes the importance of supporting the growth of our local economy, and whereas purchasing cars, boats, consumer goods, gifts, and other products and services in Charlotte County can contribute greatly to local growth with each dollar spent returning to our economy. And whereas the goal of Shop Charlotte is to strengthen opportunities and jobs and the general prosperity of all by asking Punta Gorda residents to plan their next shopping spree right here at home. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim November 27th, 2015, through December 24th, 2015, as Shop Charlotte Month in the City of Punta Gorda, and encourages consumers to make every effort to support local merchants and stores within Charlotte County by shopping Charlotte. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this 18th day of November, 2015, Rachel Kiesling, Mayor. And accepting will be... It will be, I have Julie's name down. Allison. Allison.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Allison Birch. I work for Charlotte State Bank and Trust, and I'm also the president-elect of the Charlotte County Chamber. I'm honored today to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Chamber, and invite you all to Shop Charlotte, not just in the next month, but throughout the year. We have so many wonderful stores right here locally. There is no need to go anywhere else for anything that you might need. Please shop Charlotte. Thank you.
Thank you. And bank Charlotte, too. Next, we have Founder's Day Week presented by Councilmember Pravky.
Thank you. It's my honor as a board member of the Punta Gorda History Center. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, whereas the City of Punta Gorda was incorporated on December 7, 1887, and whereas it is deemed this date should always be remembered and celebrated, and whereas the rich history of Punta Gorda shall forever be passed down to future generations, and whereas the public has an obligation to always acknowledge the dedication and foresight of the city founders, and whereas during the week prior to and leading up to December 7, a meeting was held to vote on the incorporation and other activities that lead to the incorporation, and whereas the city has forever benefited from the efforts of its founders. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does hereby proclaim December 1 through 7, 2015, as Founder's Day Week, and that henceforth, December 1st to December 7th, shall be acknowledged as Founder's Day Week throughout the city each year. Passed and duly adopted in general session this 18th day of November, 2015, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, Rachel Kiesling, Mayor. And accepting is Jean Murtha, who is the president of the Punta Gorda History Center, and the person who is, and his wife, the brainchild behind this, and also Gussie Baker and Martha McKenzie. Committee members.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Would you like to say something?
I will.
Yes, good morning, City Council, and good morning, everyone. Jean Murtha. And we're kind of proud of this proclamation, and I think the efforts throughout the community on establishing a Founder's Week celebration. So we are indebted to all the organizations that have gotten behind this, and I think each year it will get bigger and better, and we're gonna go through this in a few minutes, I think, in more detail, and how we're gonna kick this off. And thank you again for the proclamation.
I think we're gonna go through it right now, Jean.
Jean, I think you're up.
Jean, you're up. Continue on, Jean.
Okay. And thank you, Michaela, for all the work you've done. So anyway, I'm president of the Punta Gorda History Center. Of course, we were given a building, or I should say we have a lease on a building on Gray Street, which we're raising money for, which will be part of a history campus out by Charlotte High School, but in the interim period of time, we have an office on Sullivan Street. And we have an event committee, which does a lot of fundraising, planning, and the event committee decided we wanted to have a fundraiser on December 5, which I'll cover in a few minutes, but in thinking it's a little further, we realized how close we were to December 7, which is the actual founding date and incorporation of the city. So it struck us that there are a great number of nonprofits and 501(c)(3) who are always looking for opportunities to raise money. So we were not alone, so we figured, might I open this and make it all-inclusive for all organizations throughout the city to be able to schedule an event during the timeframe of December 1 through December 7, and you would be part and bundled and umbrellaed under the Founder's Day Week celebration. Well, it kind of like took off like a rocket ship, and I think we have like 15, 16 different organizations, and we had tremendous cooperation from the Punta Gorda Chamber, the Charlotte County Chamber, the city, and the county. And some of the things which have been scheduled in this inaugural year are pretty fantastic, took a lot of work. And so, without further ado, I'll go through the schedule, but Michaela also left some schedules on the back shelf back here, but you're about to see them all over town. You'll see them in the Charlotte Sun, who's also been a partner, and probably Wink TV, or whatever else we can get, but this is going to be pretty massive, I think, in the years ahead. So our history is pretty incredible. I think I learn something new every day from people like Martha and Gussie. They tell stories of the old days that make your hair stand on end. But anyway, okay, so I'm gonna step back here. I think I can talk pretty loud.
Can you get him?
The Sunset Historic Cruise, what we said...
I'm sorry, Mr. Murtha. You'll have to speak into the microphone.
Oh, well, okay. I'm sorry. The Sunset Historic Cruise, what we said, this is for 501(c)(3) and nonprofits, but if any private organization wants to do something and contribute to any 501(c)(3) of their choice, they can certainly participate. And Kingfisher Fleet stood up, and that's exactly what they're gonna do. Now, this is gonna be pretty fantastic. They're also having Mike Haymans there to, I think, give his rendition of the history, and of course, they all know Mike. That'll be interesting. So here we have Team Punta Gorda, just recently joined us. They're also gonna have an event out at the History Park. That's the date, that's the time. The History Park, we'll get to in a couple of minutes. Gussie's done a tremendous amount of work out at the History Park, but I'll cover it in a second. Okay, so Indian Springs Cemetery. The Charlotte County History Center, which is temporarily out in the larger, the old Health and Human Services building on Gray Street, is gonna conduct tours of the cemetery. The Indian Springs Cemetery is a history, has a history of itself. It's pretty phenomenal. So that's gonna be pretty exciting. So, okay, downtown Punta Gorda. Oh, okay, yeah. This is gonna be trolley tours, okay. Marie La Bresi, if you know Marie from the Charlotte Players, she's going to be participating in these trolley tours, so this'll be something else. And Stacy Jones from Kay's and Ponder's is sponsoring it, and so there'll be like refreshments also offered back at Kay's and Ponder's after it. I think they have plans on three tours, and that'll be one fun tour, particularly Marie's.
Narrating.
Okay. Okay, and, oh, okay, the Lantern House is having a tee, which is, I believe, already sold out. And I'm not positive, so if you were interested in going... Trying to flip around here and talk at the same time. Yeah, they certainly have, the black community certainly has a history of itself. So this was an all-inclusive event of all organizations, churches, it didn't really matter, and they stepped right up, Scott Shriverly, and so we're pretty pleased to have them. And what's next? Let's see. This is another do-not-miss, okay. Rachel and the City Council have been working on this. I won't spill the beans, because I'm sure they got quite an event planned here, but they're going to give tours of this building, okay? And it has a history unto itself, okay? So they're all gonna be participating, I believe. Am I correct with that?
Yes.
Okay, so it should be a fun day for that. And, oh, yeah. Y'all know Linda Wilson. Linda's Analyst of Relay for Life, the cancer organization, and she does an unbelievable job. Oh, they're gonna have luminaries all along Marion Street with names on it and all, so you know, you certainly can donate to cancer research and all. I have to say Linda's an incredible This is Gussie's, Gussie Baker's baby here. It's angels in the park. She's been making angels, I think, for months. And would you like to say something, Gussie, about the angels?
Would you say something about those angels, special angels? Special angels?
Yeah, why don't you talk about the angels for a second?
Punta Gorda has a lot of angels, and so this year, we're gonna do things different, and we're recognizing those angels. You've never seen their name in the paper, but they've done great stuff here in Punta Gorda. And we are really excited, and we hope everybody comes down and sees our angels and hears the stories about them, and some of them are funny, some of them are unbelievable, but you'll meet some wonderful, wonderful people, because that's what Punta Gorda is. It's just a whole bunch of families that moved here, loved it, and stayed here.
Yeah, regarding families, we have people here like Martha McKenzie. She's five generations here, okay? We have historians who probably can answer almost any of your questions, so you're all welcome to come by our office anytime we're on Sullivan Street again. Okay.
Holidays, home tours, garden club.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Garden clubs. This is always fantastic, tours of the older historic homes here. They were one of the first ones to jump right in. One of the concerns of the older organizations, where this, you know, common marketing across all these enterprises is going to be successful. Well, everybody's thrilled with how this is going, okay? And this is an event that, this is not the official tree lighting ceremony, as John referred to, right? This is a celebration of Christmas. It's on December 4. Rachel kind of like been spearheading this, and Nancy's been involved, pretty much everybody's been involved, but this should be a great night. We're gonna do a little caroling, is that correct? And so, so this'll be Marion and Taylor by the tree. It'll be a really great, fun night. So, and thank you for inviting us to be the first ones to get up and sing, you know? Our vast amounts of vocal talent, I'm sure, will excel. And this is our event. This is the Punta Gorda History Center's fundraiser. We're raising the capital to refurbish the building that we're eventually gonna move into out by the campus out there, history campus. It's a Southern supper. I know, being a Yankee, you know, I had to say Southern supper, couldn't find anything to eat, but when they said swamp cabbage, I wasn't quite sure. But actually, there's gonna be swamp cabbage. So, yeah, it's a pretty fantastic menu. It's 50 bucks, and any proceeds go towards our History Center. So, and now, John also reminded me that the Punta Gorda Chamber was good enough to build a specific website just for this week, okay? So, and it is punta gordafoundersweek.com, okay? Punta Gordafoundersweek.com. You can see all the events out there, all the flyers. And, okay, and now, the Women's Club. The Women's Club is a pretty fantastic event. They're celebrating their 90th anniversary, okay? And that's a big deal, okay? And if you look at the founders of the Women's Club, some of the most remarkable people, and some remarkable ladies have gone through there, like Kellin Warble and so on and so forth, but this is a big deal. It's their 90th anniversary, it's also part of Founder's Week. Okay, here's others. Now, the top one here, if I may, just make sure I got it right. This is a do-not-miss, okay? Y'all know Paul Stamollis and Louis Facco and those guys out there. That group are really into history, okay? They are gonna be all as reenactors for this, okay? They're gonna have a 1887 wedding reenactment, okay? I'm not sure they're gonna have a wedding reception afterwards, but you know, this is gonna be special. So they're all ready for it, and they've already had pictures taken of the group in costumes on the steps, so this is gonna be a great day, okay? Christmas at the farmer's market, the downtown association, the Kiwanis Club, Christmas card lane goes up, and that's gonna be at the Charlotte Harbor Event and Conference Center. Everybody knows Christmas card lane. I was involved with it for many years. And the Chamber, the parade, which is always great, most of us are gonna be in it, so. And finally, Frank Desquins and Mike Hayman for the Kiwanis will be conducting a citywide chess tournament, which is a reenactment of the chess tournaments of the old days. Isaac Tribou actually beat the world grandmaster, okay? So he was no schlock. I mean, this guy was brilliant. So, yeah, how that's gonna take place, I'm not quite sure, but Mike and Frank have sworn, we're gonna have this citywide. The original concept was to have the final chess match on the roof of the garage, and have a big party up there, but I'm not sure of the details yet, so. But, and so, once again, for a full list, punta gordafoundersweek.com, and we have Facebook stuff all over the place. So hopefully you can partake of any and all of the events. It'll be spectacular. It'll be in the newspaper, and many thanks to everybody who's participated. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. You've done such a great job. I mean, for the first year, this is pretty impressive, that we have that many events happening that week. So thank you so much for that. Okay, next, we have a presentation by the Maestro Ponte with the Charlotte Symphony Orchestra.
Good morning, and thank you, Mayor Kiesling, members of the council, and friends. Good morning. My name is Rafael de Ponte, and I am proud to be the music director and conductor of your Charlotte Symphony Orchestra. I'm here with my awesome team, our chairman of the board, Mr. Ken Barber's here, and our executive director, Regina Buckley. I couldn't do this without them. We're very excited. For those who know, this is beginning of my third season, and we are proud to say that this community has just embraced us, and we have sold out our first two seasons already. This past weekend was our opening season, which, again, falling in line, was a sold-out performance, and unfortunately, we're turning away about 100 to 150 people a night at our performances. We perform at CPAC, which is a lovely auditorium. It's just too small, because we've outgrown ourselves, and it would be nice someday to have the idea of a larger hall, so that we can accommodate more people and have a bigger impact on our community. So, we started this concert with Brahms and Schumann, and we brought in the Italian pianist Antonio Pompa Baldi from Foggia, Italy, who now spends time here at the Cleveland Studio Music, is distinguished professor. So we're drawing major talents to join our symphony orchestra. Later in the season, we have a violin soloist, international career, Gary Levinson, who will be visiting Punta Gorda and bringing his Stradivarius with him. And I say that only because they don't give those things away. You actually have to play them to earn them. So that's really... them to, to earn them. So, uh, that's really, really exciting. We have, uh, this year, we're introducing something new. We have seven concerts a year, if you're not aware of that. They all are on Sunday evenings at seven thirty at the Charlotte Performing Arts Center. And uh, we do them from November to March to cater to our season and to provide opportunity for people to see us. This orchestra is made of seventy-five members. Several, about four years ago, it had only forty orchestral members. Our orchestra roster now is seventy-five strong. All fully professional, all paid. Uh, and that's pretty impressive for a town of this size. My concert master comes from Gainesville. We have players from Orlando, Tampa, and Miami, and everywhere in between. They travel in for these power weekends. We have three three-hour rehearsals, uh, for each performances. Two on Saturday and one on Sunday with a Sunday evening performance. Then everyone dissipates and goes back to their day job, teaching somewhere, or, um, uh, making music or musical instruments, whatever they do. So it's very exciting to have a truly professional orchestra of all-star caliber that come here to form your Charlotte Symphony Orchestra. It's very, very impressive. Uh, so I hope to see you throughout the season sometime.
Maestro.
Yes, sir.
Take a minute, and please elaborate on what, what you're doing to reach out to the kids of our community, if you wouldn't mind.
Thanks, Tom. My point now is that the symphony goes way beyond the concert stage. Because making the orchestra relevant to the community was our main goal when I was higher nine here. Uh, because it's wonderful just to put up a poster and say, okay, a concert, Sunday night, seven thirty. And you may have heard the names Beethoven, Brahms, or Mozart, or Tchaikovsky. But what does that really mean to you? Really means nothing, right? It's, you'll get a good performance out of the deal, but that's not enough. Because making the orchestra and proving the quality of life is what the, the orchestra wants to be a part of, was our goal, your goal, and we are your orchestra. I spent this, this entire year, every symphony week that I'm here, I'm always here for these weeks of the symphony. And I'm into the schools, visiting with every third grader in the county, including private and homeschooled throughout the, the season. And I'm not talking about just the music kids. We're talking about the entire third grade. This year's theme is Carnival of the Animals. And I'm bringing in recordings and images of all the animals and instruments represented in this piece by the French composer Camille Saint-Sance. And as you know this piece, it's a charming work, all of one and two-minute little excerpts. And the kids are looking at all these animals and all these instruments of the orchestra. And by listening, they have to decide which animal's being represented or described through the music. Then, with their ears, their detective work, is to which orchestral instrument is representing that animal. So once they figure that out by listening, then they draw the elephant. And they have to write the instrument, which happens to be the bass, the largest instrument for the largest animal. And the two go together. So they draw the elephant, and the elephant's name happens to be bass. So they're doing creative artwork. And what I'm doing is conjuring them or tricking them into listening to classical music in a very creative way. And they end up enjoying it very much. This year, we've added a component to that, Tom, where I've invited Peace River Wildlife Center to come into the schools, bringing live animals. And that has been an awesome hit for the kids. They absolutely love that. And the rule number one, I think they say, never follow children or animals in your routine, because it's, you're never, you're nobody then. But this is a big, big success. Uh, and they will also be involved in, in January, we then bus all these third graders that I've made a connection with throughout the season. And we bring them into the hall for a forty-five-minute program. And we have to do two of them to house this many, uh, because we fill the hall twice. Uh, they'll get a chance to hear the actual, our orchestra play Carnival of the Animals, plus other animal-related music like Flight of the Bumblebee, and on, and on, and on. Uh, the animals will be also part of the program. Between pieces, the, the, uh, people from Peace River will bring on animals and describe a little bit about who, what they are, where they found them, and where they, their habitats are from, and give them a little history. In addition to all of that, if that weren't enough, for free, we are, uh, in the Black Box Theater, right next to the, the hall. Uh, we will have an instrument petting zoo, where these children will be able to walk around to each instrument station, play a trumpet, play a violin, bang a drum, have an opportunity in the third grade to not only have heard it and experienced it, but be able to touch it and, and, and make a sound on it. And maybe draw an interest, and maybe I would like to be in that. You know, we all need to be in a good gang. You wanna be a council member, that's a good gang. You wanna be part of society, be a good gang. Okay? Music is a good, good gang. And it keeps kids in good places. They're better students. They're wonderful kids. And I encourage them to join my musical gang and be my friends. So I think that's a really great, great thing. So that's what we're doing with the kids. But when I took this job, I realized we don't only have eight-year-olds, we have eighty-eight-year-olds to take care of, too. And they're just my other kids, okay? And I think what we're doing with them, with, uh, programs like Behind the Notes, uh, where they spend two hours with me before a, a concert, uh, delving into my scores, listening to recordings, and kind of looking at, why did Beethoven do this? Why did he choose that instrument? Why is that theme important? How did he bring it back in the last movement? It's really become a really fun, a group of people who are inquisitive in mind. And it, we find that it enhances the concert experience when they attend, uh, that, the, that few days later. So it's really a lot of fun. We are also adding a Christmas holiday pops concert this year for the first time, where it's gonna be a lot of fun and a lot of surprises, where it's all the favorite hits. Okay? Uh, we, that concert has been sold out for months already, at seven thirty. So we've added, uh, two o'clock matinee to that, right at the, at the hall, CPAC, uh, begins at two o'clock. And again, our policy is, uh, with an adult, children eighteen years or younger are free. So you could bring mom or dad, or a relative could bring four or five children, uh, at no charge. And because we feel that the symphony is for everybody. And it's also for people who may be busy in the evening, give them another opportunity, uh, with busy schedules, to hear our orchestra and kick off the holiday season. But also for those folks who may not wanna drive in the evening. That's a whole nother demographic we're trying to reach out to. So it's for everyone, again. Uh, Valentine's Day happens to fall on a Sunday this year, on the fourteenth. So we were sort of forced into, why not do a Valentine's fun, uh, I love you concert? Don't look at me that way. Okay? And we're holding it, uh, at the event center, because we're trying to create it like the Boston Pops with Arthur Feeler, where cabaret seats and, uh, tables in the front. There'll be food for purchase, beverages of your choice, uh, a full performance with your symphony orchestra of all love-themed music. And then after the performance, if that were not enough, uh, we've invited guest Al Holland from our community, as you know and love. He's gonna sing, and we're gonna clear, so you can dance on the dance floor for an hour after the symphony performance itself. So it's a wonderful opportunity to bring groups, uh, of friends. It's a wonderful date night, uh, for all ages. We hope to see people there. That should be a lot of fun.
What date is your holiday pops?
The holiday pops is December sixth. And we've had these rec cards for everybody who's interested, and I'll leave them with you as well. Um, January tenth is the Tchaikovsky Concert with Tchaikovsky's sixth. Then January twenty-fourth is the great music of Puccini, Mascani, and Gustav Mahler Symphony Number One. It's a huge work. Holiday, uh, Valentine's Pops, of course, February fourteen. March sixth is the Brahms Symphony Number One. And Gary Levinson, the violinist, coming in to do the Sibelius Concerto, which is amazing. And we end the season, March twentieth, with the great Beethoven Symphony Number Seven. So it's something for everybody. It's a, it's, you know, I wish we had the room to house everybody. So please come, please get your tickets early. Um, and it's my pleasure to do this. I think the, the love and the support of the community has been remarkable. And I think I'd like you all to think of the Charlotte Symphony Orchestra as your symphony. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can see my t-shirt, sure you can. I'm not all classical, you know?
Thank you so much. I mean, what an impressive job you've done in these three years. It's been really amazing to watch, and the transformation, and the community effort that, that you've been, you know, spearheading is just really, really impressive. And we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Bravo. Carry on.
Maestro, I'd also like to thank you for the adult education you give before the performance, and to the personal lives of the composers, as you did last Sunday. It gives us a little extra level of appreciation of what goes on with those guys.
Terrific. Well, thank you for all your support. I look forward to seeing you at the concerts. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now would be the time, if you have your name in for a nomination appointment to one of the city boards or committees, now would be the time for you to introduce yourself, if you would like to say a few words. Anybody nomination for boards and committees? Okay, seeing none. Now we will move on to public hearing agenda. And we have a couple of ordinances.
Yes, the, uh, the first one, GA zero-six dash fifteen, this is a continuation of the first reading, uh, which we had at the last meeting. I'll read this by title only. An ordinance of the city of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Punta Gorda Code, Chapter Six, Park Regulations, Section sixteen point four, Regulations, by adding a new subsection one, no, else, excuse me, to prohibit the use of cooking equipment in city parks, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date. And I think, uh, it was continued so that you can get further staff input regarding, um, the, the, the cooking facilities. So I want to speak to that.
Mikail, you were, had something to say, didn't you?
Yeah, good morning. I'm Mikail Finkel, Paralegal and Executive Assistant. Um...
Can you put the microphone down to, there you go.
There, can you hear me? Sorry, I'm short. Um, city attorney is right. We continue this. Um, uh, you guys, when you last discussed it, you requested be limited just to the Lashley Park Fountain area. Um, so that was changed. Um, with public works, we determined a fifty-foot area around the park was sufficient for the no cooking. And then staff also researched, uh, some sort of a hot coal or ash disposal can. Um, and the only real way to do that is to have a, some sort of grated trash can, or, or ash can, where people will definitely know it's not for trash and eliminate the risk of fire. So we ask that you, um, if you want staff to move forward in, um, that direction.
A question came up, uh, in our, my meetings. Uh, how are we going to advertise this or, or inform the public about the rules?
Uh, well, the only rule, since it's just gonna be limited to Lashley, we would just put up some signage.
Signage around the fountain?
Around the fountain area, that there's no. And the fifty-foot would still allow them to cook in the pavilions.
Where are we proposing to put the ash cans?
Uh, we didn't come up with any locations yet. It would depend, um, if you do want them in the other parks where we have stationary grills, we'd have to come up with a strategic location. You know, that would be visible by the picnic areas.
Question.
Um, okay, so you're saying that you want them to cook in the pavilions? That that...
Well, the only place we are prohibiting it is within fifty feet of the fountain. So anywhere else in the park, it will be allowed.
Okay. Where do they usually cook?
Well, when this issue came up, uh, first of all, I believe they were cooking on the actual picnic tables at the fountain.
Right, okay.
And I think there was some damage to the picnic tables, as well as that's where they were just dumping the coals on the ground.
Well, I guess I was just thinking, if it was gonna be in the pavilions, that's where the ash cans should go, there. And if we were going to put them in the other parks, maybe they should be next to the grills.
Yeah.
So people know what they are for.
So just to, uh, understand, this ordinance is going to allow, uh, residents to barbecue in, in the park, outside of a fifty-foot area. They can set up a barbecue wherever they like. Is that the intent?
Yeah. Well, the intent of the original ordinance was, because we had problems, was to prohibit people from bringing in. At your, when you last discussed this, um, that was not the direction council wanted to go. Um, they were okay with only prohibiting it around the play area. So yes, it, people would be allowed in any of the parks to bring their personal pu- cooking equipment.
And we don't have any accommodations to accommodate these barbecue bits. They'd be placed on, on the, on the lawn, is it, what, wouldn't?
Yeah. There's, there's no regulation of them currently.
Is that...
Uh, yeah, you're bringing up a good point, that we spent a lot of money on that lawn. I, maybe we should just say the pavilions. I don't know. Nancy?
Uh, well, first of all, I, I think having some kind of a receptacle for the, the, uh, coals in all of the parks is, would be appropriate, a, a good thing. Um, I was wondering if at Lashley, because of the, the concerns, um, perhaps there could, should be consideration to portable gas grills only. And restricting Lashley not to include charcoal and things like that. Because portable gas grills are really, I mean, they're small, they're easy, they don't, there's no, um, I mean, they're tabletop. It's so it's, it wouldn't be, it would eliminate a lot of concerns. I think that was one of the issues when we had our previous discussion, was that we were restricting all the parks. And we said, no, you know, let's look at what the real problem area is around the, the interactive fountain at Lashley. So, um, um, I do agree, you know, we don't want people damaging the, all that expensive lawn as well.
Do we, do we have grills in the pavilion?
No, there's no grills at Lashley.
At all?
At all.
Okay. I mean, why not just let them be in the pavilion? And have the, the receptacles there. And you cook there, now you're off the grass, you're away from the kids, you're away from, I mean, you don't want people, you know, dumping hot coals. And, and I think if we say, well, it's gonna be a gas grill or whatever, how are you gonna really regulate all that?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if there's an area there to cook, this is the area in the big pavilions.
This is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open it when we're done. Question? Do you wanna...
Yeah, just one more thing. I, I would be more comfortable with that. I mean, are the parks that we currently allow, uh, cooking and barbecues, and they, we have designated picnic areas?
Designated areas.
And if, if we're going to, to do this and encourage this, I think it should be under a controlled set of rules and regulations. So I would agree with, with Kim.
This is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on GA zero-six dash fifteen, please come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes. This is a public hearing, GA zero-six dash fifteen. Would anybody like to speak? Last call.
Move to close the public hearing. Second?
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. I'm leaning toward Kim and Tom, that I think co- cooking equipment is, should be in the pavilion. Cause the grass is not a place where, except for special events, obviously. Special events, you know, are regulated through another process. So we're covered with that, I believe. But, um, I think the cooking equipment should be used in the pavilion area.
Not the stage, the pavilion.
The pavilions.
Pavilion, yes.
And we'd want the, um, to be someplace, probably not under the structure, because we don't want smoke to damage the top. But somewhere in the, the general area, we can designate somewhere.
So, I guess we're, we're looking at a designated cooking area in Lashley.
Yes. So what should we do with this?
Yeah, how about if we modify, um, the proposed subsection L to read, outdoor cooking, including the use of gas or charcoal grills, or other similar devices used for cooking, heating, or other purposes, is prohibited within Lashley Park, except within the pavilion area. Dumping of charcoal grease or impure water into any park grounds is strictly prohibited.
Should we say designated area instead of pavilion area?
Yeah, cause we don't want it inside the pavilion.
Yeah. You're standing, Rick. Did you wanna say something about it? Okay, okay.
So, except within the designated area near the pavilion area?
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion with the amended, with the amended...
I'd like to make a motion with the amended changes to approve GA zero-six one-five.
Second?
So we have a motion and a second to approve the amended language as written by, uh, city attorney Levin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have GA zero-seven dash fifteen.
Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the city of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending the Punta Gorda Code, Chapter Nine A, Code Enforcement, Section Nine Eight dash thirteen, fines for citation purposes, subsection, subsection C, zoning division, paragraph five, to correct, correct the Scrivener's error relating to inoperative, unregistered, or abandoned watercraft, providing for conflict and severability and providing effective date.
Good morning.
Good morning, for the record, Terry Tabzoning official. Um, this was a section that, uh, we found, actually, the Marine Patrol was out, and they had an unregistered vessel. And so we discussed the, uh, regulation at hand, but it called for the vessel to be unregistered, inoperative, and abandoned, in order for them to do anything. And so the intent was that it be any of those things. So and was just changed to or to correct the error.
Questions before we open it? Okay, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on GA zero-seven dash fifteen, please come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes. If anybody would like to speak on GA zero-seven dash fifteen. anybody would like to speak on GA-07-15. Last call. Don't see anybody jumping up.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing for GA-07-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve GA-07-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Next is GA-09-15, which is the first reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Puntagorda, Florida, amending the Puntagorda Code, Chapter 7, Building Regulations, Article Roman numeral 2, Building Contractors, Section 7-12, Application and Fees for Certificate of Competency, Section 7-18, Certificate of Competency Requirements, and Section 7-19, Issuance of Certificate of Competency, to update certificate of competency regulation requirements, application process, and fee, deleting in their entirety Section 7-21 and 7-22 as obsolete, amending Article Roman numeral 3, Building Codes and Regulations, Section 7-31, additions, amendments, and modifications to the Building Code, Section 7-32, violations of Building Code, penalties, and Section 7-33, building permit fees, to update penalties for violations and building permit fees, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Good morning, Randy Coe, Chief Building Official. The first part is the certificate of competency, is just to streamline the process and recognize someone who's in good standing in another municipality, so we don't have duplication of effort, and we can get people right to work. The safeguards remain in effect, because we will verify that they're in good standing and have no issues wherever their original license or certificate of competency was issued.
And we're raising the fee?
That part, as we were going through the ordinance and looking at it, the fee hadn't been changed in over 20 years. Only registered, only non-certified contractors pay the fee. So we have approximately 1,100 registered contractors and trades in the city right now. Less than 400 of them actually pay the fee. So it helped to phrase some of the administrative costs. We looked at it, and after 20 years, didn't think 25% increase was unreasonable.
Questions?
Not really. I think, is this something that is like CBDIA? Is it consistent with what is going on in the industry?
Yeah. So what we do is, when someone wants to work in the city, they register their license, whether it be a county license, or a state license, or a specialty license with us, and we check their insurance and our workman's comp, and make sure it's all up to date, so that we know that they're good to go here. The other part of this, as far as the, if you want me to move forward, the fee structure.
Yes, go ahead.
We didn't have any specific language to allow the building official to waive re-inspect fees, or extension of permits and things. And even though we do it, and everyone does, as a standard practice, sometimes people aren't home, they had to leave unexpectedly, and rather than sock them with a fee, we'll just cancel it, try to redo it. Sometimes it's something that they've missed, and we're coming back for another inspection, and we'll be able to look at that then, as if something minor. So we just showed some latitude there, but we didn't have specific language to allow the building official to do that, so that's incorporated in this. And then Mikail went through and just kind of cleaned up the language overall.
Any other questions before we open it? Okay, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on GA-09-15, please come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes. GA-09-15. Last call on GA-09-15.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move approval of GA-09-15.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve GA-09-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Randy, I hear over and over again, from different people in the community, how pleased they really are working with the City of Puntagorda Building Department. So I want to acknowledge that, and thank you for the job that you guys do.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Absolutely.
And now we're moving on to GA-11-15.
Yes, this also is the first reading of an ordinance that I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Puntagorda, Florida, amending the Puntagorda Code, Chapter 16, Park Regulations, Section 16-4G, Animals, to adopt provisions relating to pets in city parks, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
Are you the lead on this?
Yeah. Well, Howard's out of town.
Mikail Finkel, Paralegal and Executive Assistant.
Can I answer the question about the leash length, would you please?
Yeah. This ordinance came about several, actually, several, several months ago. This group discussed the, having animals in nature park in some other areas along Gilchrist. At that time, you want us to have to go back and kind of incorporate some of the, you reviewed the Florida State Parks policies, and I think CHECK was policies, and you asked some of that be incorporated into ours, to give it a little more teeth. We went through that, incorporated what was applicable to us. The one variance or deviation was the leash. The State Parks, CHECK, they do a six-foot leash. Staff reviewed it and felt that, in the real world, people out walking their dogs on our sidewalks, retractable leashes for medium, large-sized dogs average about, up to 16 foot, you know, 12 to 16. So that was a more realistic than a six-foot leash.
I think 16 is quite generous, myself. I mean, I know we had this discussion about retractable leashes. They do cause issues, but, I mean, I don't know that we really want to ban those. I mean, my neighbors, you know, have a little Yorkie dog, and that's fine on a retractable leash, but, you know, retractable leashes really are not, if you ask your vet, they would tell you probably not to use that type of leash, because they're not very safe. But 16 just seems like a long lead. You have a dog?
Well, my dog's trained off of a leash, so, but she has to stay next to me for a reason, because there's bicycles, and there's people walking. And so the problem with the retractable leashes, and you don't want to tell people, is, I mean, I live on Reta. It's pandemonium out there. It really is. And it's really crazy right now. And it's just not even really season. And what happens is, even with the little tiny dogs, is they let them go, because they want to walk, you know, they want to, you know, be walking around. And they will be across the pathway. And then people, you know, it's really long. It's really kind of dangerous, those long leashes. So that's why the six, I mean, when you're training your dog, that six-foot leash keeps that dog right next to you, where they're supposed to be when you want them to be, because they're in your control. So, but I get it, because some of the older people, they can't really walk their dog that far. So they have the long ones, and they let them run around. It's not too bad in some areas, but when you get really busy, when season is there, and I mean the pathways are crowded, and those long leashes are dangerous. Tom?
Yes, I believe it was Councilmember Prackey to ask for this review with regard to consistency towards the state standards. And I agree with the state standards with regard to the extent of a leash, and what Councilmember Devine as well. I can envision people walking their dog through the nature park, and the 16-foot leash allowing the dog to meander through the gardens and flowers that they have here. I can, I would think that the Green Thomas may not be too happy with that. So I would like to see a stick with a shorter leash.
I don't have a pet myself, so, but I have encountered dogs that have been on longer leashes, and the dog is wandering, and I'm, you know, either on a bicycle or whatever. And it does become a problem. And I think the state regulation is in the parks. I think if there's some consistency, then I think it's okay.
Gary?
Having a dog that uses a 16-foot leash, it seems to me that what the issue is, and is probably the reason for the ordinance, is really, it's the person that walks it. Because when people are coming towards us, this has a ratchet, and I intentionally loosen the leash. So what we're really talking is about the owners, and we're really not talking about the dog. And I think that you have to promote safety, and whether it's a retractable leash that you limit them to, six or eight feet, whatever that number's going to be, or, I don't think you should ban the retractable leash, per se, but the length that you use, how you enforce it, that could be another issue, but it's just a matter of courtesy, really, that we want to be able to encourage with the citizens relative to their dogs.
City Attorney?
Yeah, let me ask this question. With respect to the longer leashes, the retractable leashes, are those, are they primarily a problem, a potential problem on the nature park and the Puntagorda pathways?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So how about if we prohibit retractable leases?